Meeting of City Council come to order. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Great to have you with us on this rainy evening. Please rise for invocation by Councilmember Fleming, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, your gracious God, we truly thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for those things that you have done to made us happy and comfortable and well-nourished in your sight. More importantly, Lord, we thank you for the things that you have allowed us to share and to give to others. We also ask you to continue to be with those men and women who serve our city, who care for the streets, the houses, everything in the community, and make it possible for us to be able to live well together. We ask right now for special blessing upon these men and women who are here to serve you. We ask that you be with us to make good decisions and do those things which are pleasing in your sight. Please continue to strengthen and bless our staff and our officers and all of those who are working to make this a better place. Thank you for those things that you have given us, and we ask that you will continue to bless us for those who are not well and who are working in faraway places. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I apologize to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Clerk will call the roll.
Member John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of July 14th, which will stand as approved, as submitted unless there are any objections. They are so approved. Okay. Up front, we have a kind of a progress report. No decisions are being made tonight on these topics. It's just an update from Councilman DeWorke on a very important matter.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. If everyone remembers, on June 9th, an ordinance came before us dealing with a very important, very, very important issue of homelessness. And at that time, we all decided to punt, to give ourselves more time to have that conversation about the ordinance. And so we said, hey, let's go ahead and revisit it back on August 11th. Well, it came quicker than anyone realized with the start of school today. So here we are. And so because it is a complex issue, it's a complicated issue because it impacts human beings, it impacts our citizens, we just wanted to have the opportunity just to give a little report on what we've done, on what we're planning on doing, and certainly can take any questions. So I think it's important to note that in this process, I think we'd all agree, this council and others, that whatever we do, we lead by grace, we lead by compassion. These are human beings, these are our citizens, and so very important to do that. So Mayor, Council, what have we done? We have spent hours and hours and hours and hours looking at this issue, and more hours. We have researched other cities around the country, who's doing it well, who may not be doing it well. Houston is just one example of one city that continues to rise in terms of their effectiveness with homelessness. We have spent time, I say we, some members of council, and I and staff have spent time with our providers. I cannot tell you how many times I have called Greenville Together for questions and the like. I feel like I have them on speed dial, and for real, they will attest to that. But we've also spent time with other providers. We've had roundtable discussions with homeless service providers, learning. We've spent many hours with each, with some of our homeless providers as well. For example, Ryan Jork at Miracle Hill was gracious enough to give Councilor Dow and I three hours of his time for the wonderful things that he's doing. We've spent time with business owners, small business owners. We've spent time with residents, residences. We've, my goodness, kicked around language on an ordinance language, just around the moon and back. We've also, the homeless service providers were not only gracious, but forward-thinking in providing recommendations to this council, which I'm grateful for. So we've talked about how can we weave that into whatever we do if we're going to do something. Also, I know all of us, including me, have listened to our constituents. We've had conversations with our constituents. I have a little show and tell. This is fascinating. This is, I received, I put out an email, I just said, hey, what are, this is my constituents, what are your thoughts? Please let me know. In 72 hours, literally, in 72 hours, I got over 300 emails. I mean, just thoughtful emails. I'm not saying they're all for doing it or not doing it, but it is, it was just, I think, a testament to this community and how much we care and how much people care about this issue. All right, so where do we go from here? In my mind, I think where we go from here is to continue having these conversations. I always have a saying that you want to get it right, you don't want to necessarily get it fast. And so we'll continue the conversations with our homeless service providers. I also look forward to having more conversations with our council members. And I always also believe that when you have many differing opinions, it makes things better. So looking forward to that as well, looking at other cities, et cetera, and then, of course, continuing to support Greenville Together and their efforts. But I will go back to this, that whatever we do, we will lead by grace and compassion because that is what this city is all about. So with that, Mayor, that's my.
All right. Any questions to Councilman DeWorke? All right. Okay, we also had a report scheduled for today, too. I'm going to move it up now for Greenville Together. The city of Greenville is a co-creator, a co-creator of Greenville Together with United Way and many other organizations. And we have Cody here going to do the presentation, and he's going to give a little update on Greenville Together, which is our primary vehicle for dealing with issues of homeless and is interacting with Councilman DeWorke and on rules of conduct downtown, too.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, Mayor White, City Councilmembers, City Manager Laverne, and my fellow Greenville neighbors. I'm here tonight to provide an update on Greenville Together's efforts. Greenville Together is our community's united effort to functionally end homelessness. We have brought together local businesses, city leaders, service providers, those with lived experience of homelessness, and our citizens to create a sustainable solution to homelessness built on national best practices and tailored specifically to Greenville. I want to recognize the city of Greenville as a key partner in this work. The city's $500,000 investment in Greenville Together reflects a strong commitment to a collaborative and community-wide approach to addressing homelessness. Functionally ending homelessness doesn't mean that homelessness will never occur. Always love to use the example of Hurricane Helene. Within 24 hours, many of our community members were experiencing homelessness as their homes were decimated by the storm. Achieving functional zero means that we have a response system in our community that is strong enough to respond quickly and effectively, making homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. That is Greenville Together's mission. Since the Grants Pass Supreme Court decision last year, 260 municipalities have passed ordinances similar to the one being considered by our city council. There is no evidence that these ordinances on their own have decreased homelessness. They are expensive to enforce and quite simply just don't work. Incarceration and fines don't solve the problem, they just move it from one block to another, making a very real daily reality for hundreds of our community members even more hidden. We agree that the city needs better tools to address homelessness in our community. We understand that the right approach is likely a combination of a fair, reasonable, and humane ordinance combined with the ongoing work of Greenville Together and our many other service providers here in our community. The ordinance alone will not solve homelessness, but together we can accomplish something that many communities aspire to, but few actually do. That truly is what our community does best. So let me first dispel a few misconceptions, paint a picture of what we're seeing as the daily realities of homelessness in Greenville Together's first seven months of operating, and then share the results of our work so far. I often hear the claim that people experiencing homelessness refuse help. This is almost never the case. Of the 20 referrals made to Greenville Together in our first month of our housing surge, only one has declined our help or support. There is, as you might imagine, some initial caution when we offer to quickly move someone into housing. People experiencing homelessness have no reason to believe anyone is going to help them because so few ever do. Our frontline providers and the Greenville Police Department play an important role in helping us build trust and refer people into our program. They're doing a tremendous job, and I thank them for their efforts. Another common claim is that people experiencing homelessness are crazy or addicted to drugs. While, yes, some do struggle with mental health and addiction, just as many with stable housing also do. Studies in our own data show that mental health and addiction affect less than half of our homeless population. And it's not clear whether addiction was the initial cause of homelessness or developed after becoming homeless as a response to severe and chronic trauma, which those experiencing homelessness in our community are exposed to each and every day. Most of those experiencing homelessness were pushed into this crisis by circumstances beyond their control: loss of family support, domestic abuse, job loss, or the lack of truly affordable housing. Finally, I often hear the claim that if we just make it unpleasant enough to be homeless, people will go somewhere else. This assumes that people have options that they simply do not have, and that one, and that number two, there is something worse than sleeping outside. Displacement doesn't end homelessness. Moving the problem doesn't end homelessness, it just makes it more difficult to connect people with the resources and the services that they actually need and that work. Sometimes the only thing standing between a person and stable housing is something small, but possible, but impossible to overcome alone: a security deposit that they can't afford, poor credit, a past eviction, or an old criminal record. For others, it's even more basic: not having a government-issued ID, which means they can't get a job or sign a lease. One woman that we helped through our housing surge program had been unable to rent for seven years because of a $300 passed utility bill all the way from 2018. These barriers are not insurmountable. People just need an advocate with the capacity, the expertise, and the resources to assist them, which is exactly what Greenville Together is doing. So now, let's talk about the progress that we've made so far. Greenville Together launched our citywide housing surge on July 3rd with a goal of housing 50 households experiencing unsheltered homelessness and assisting 30 more to safely exit homelessness by reconnecting with friends, family, or trusted providers by the end of this year. In the six weeks since launching our housing surge, we have placed nine households into housing and have five more in the pipeline. We are now moving people from intake all the way into housing in less than six days. This is an unprecedented timeline that we have never before seen in our community. One participant, who is a domestic abuse survivor, had lived in a tent for two years. Women experiencing homelessness face extreme risks of violence, assault, and exploitation. Many women become homeless due to domestic violence and then face further victimization while unhoused. Last Thursday, we moved a 72-year-old man who had been experiencing homelessness on and off for almost 30 years into his own apartment. He told his case manager, "I'm going to make this worth your while," to which she responded, "You're going to make this worth your while," which is, in fact, the purpose of our housing surge program. On Friday, we moved our first family into their new home. This working family of five, with children aged 14, 10, and 7, lived in their car for nearly a year before being referred to us by the Greenville Police Department. Just before move-in, they discovered that all of their belongings, including their children's bikes, had been auctioned off because they could not pay the rent on their storage unit. This moment showcased one of Greenville Together's core strengths: intentional collaboration to maximize every dollar invested. Affordable Upstate, who is one of our key housing partners, didn't have a home for this family, but they were able to connect our housing navigator to other providers, leading to the perfect home for this family. Furniture and furnishings were donated by 3B Interiors. Swamp Rabbit movers transported everything at no charge. And on Saturday morning, the kids were able to get new bikes and helmets thanks to Mill Village and Village Wrench. People who have been experiencing unsheltered homelessness for years bring other issues with them into their new homes. I'm a firm believer that the most important part in this process is not just getting folks housed, but keeping them housed. When we place someone in their new home, we don't just hand them the keys, walk away, and say, figure this out on your own. We pair them with a case manager who assists them in establishing a plan and a support system to develop stability and self-sufficiency within two years. Our approach is guided by the belief that people need basic necessities like food and a place to live in order to pursue their personal goals and improve their quality of life. We have already seen people's health and well-being return once they had a front door that they could lock. The early success of our housing surge is undeniable because we are getting results other partners want to join in on this work. The Greenville Housing Authority has recently allocated 50 emergency housing vouchers to Greenville Together exclusively for people in our community experiencing homelessness. These vouchers are a rare federally-funded resource that must be deployed by October 1st, launching an immediate rapid-response timeline and infrastructure for these efforts. Partnering with the Greenville Housing Fund, we have assigned all vouchers in less than two weeks. This is on top of our 80-household goal through the housing surge by the end of this year. We are housing people, and we are doing it quickly. And we are building a system to sustain our success because we believe that housing changes everything. Greenville has always been a community that tackles hard problems together, and homelessness is no different. Tonight, I'm asking all of us here in the room and many more in our community to join us, not just with an ordinance, but also through a commitment to invest in the solutions that are working. Let's lead with compassion, act with urgency, and show the nation what it looks like when a city refuses to accept homelessness as inevitable. We have the opportunity right here today to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring once and for all. Thank you all for your time tonight, and thank you for your continued support of Greenville Together, a home for all. I will now open up the floor for any questions that you may have.
Appreciate your comments. I see Reverend Dogan, I believe, walked in after we were in the very back row, co-chair of the Greenville Together. Some of the people who have looked at our program and observed it in real time have said to me things like, my goodness, that's the most granular effort at addressing homeless we've ever heard of in any city in the country, one-on-one, very hard. We've actually always had that philosophy. We, our police department, with the social worker community, works one-on-one with people, and it's hard work. It's never easy. But we've always done that, and now we've ratcheted that up. And I think it's very important to kind of put on, underline again, stuff you said in the very beginning, is that we have quantifiable goals with this program, and we've really relied on the committee of this organization to quantify these things for us, how many people, with 50 people being the goal. And we have had, perhaps to a lot of people's surprise, even our surprise, more good fortune up front in identifying houses, places for people to live, apartments and houses. Some people thought that that's not possible. You will guess what we did, and Brian Brown's here with the housing fund and his work with the vouchers, combining vouchers with these programs. Again, you're not seeing that in most cities. We haven't found other cities in South Carolina doing that, but we are, and we're having good luck with it. We're finding landlords who say, hey, I just didn't know you, I've got a place somebody could live. Who would have guessed? We've got a number of those. I forgot how many we've actually identified up front, but that was one of your first surprises and successes, actually, was it not?
Yeah, absolutely. We have 78 current landlords that are in the pipeline that are willing to partner with Greenville Together. So that is a phenomenal number and goal that we have been able to achieve.
Because nobody was connecting all the dots and talking to everybody. Everybody was doing their own thing in a vacuum, if you will, in a bubble, and now we're bringing them all together. And I think that's what Greenville Together is going to be all about. So I think it is going to be a strong supplement, if you will, to any ordinance we have in terms of conduct downtown. Our main goal is to get people into this system, to get them into the system, to be aware of it, and maybe sometimes even a little cajoling to get people into this system because we have something to offer. And as you said up front, a lot of these people say, well, actually, no one's ever talked to me, or anybody I believed, and now we're doing that. So we commend you for that, but thank you for that very thorough report.
Would you mind sharing that with our clerk so she can circulate it to council, please?
Absolutely. Happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank everybody who's involved. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to us before we get into our regular dinner night. So Mr. Farmer, you're up first.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Twice last year, I shared with council how developers were abusing the Historic Review Board Property Tax Assessment Freeze Authority. I asked the council modify the ordinance so that you would have final vote on these freezes. The county, the city, the school board, Greenville Tech, the arena district, and the library all use these tax assessments to levy millage for operations. By freezing developers' rates, these government bodies must collect the revenue from the citizens. It's got to come from somewhere. Additionally, only city residents can be appointed to this historic review board, even though these decisions affect all county residents. This amounts to taxation without representation for the vast majority of county residents. After reviewing state law, city ordinance, and county policy, I was able to find a resolution to this problem. I appear here today to tell you that if any of you had this matter on your to-do list, there's no need to act. I know each of you are busy and have many issues to address, so you can mark this off your list. I'm glad that I was able to resolve this issue for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Yvonne Reader? Yvonne? Hello?
Hi. To city council and those of you who are in the audience, the gentleman before me, homelessness is what I was going to speak about. Very much closely read my speech. So I'm just going to cover portions of it for those of you who may not have been touched by what he just shared with us. Our community's strength is measured by how we treat those with nowhere to go. Research of cities that have been successful needs to be done. I know what it's like to grow up close to homelessness. There were nine of us in a four-room house with one bathroom. I slept in a crib until I was six, and then on a fold-out sofa on the glass-windled porch. My clothes were stored underneath it. We lived off our backyard garden and played with the silk on the cornstalks for doll's hair and ate from a 50-pound sack of potatoes. Despite those hardships, we all graduated, found good jobs, and built better lives. My father, with only a third-grade education, due to VA training, learned to repair shoes and bought a shoe repair business. I went on to work for Duke Energy for 33 years, and along the way, I learned this truth: to help people, you must see and feel their pain. That's why I studied addiction, mental illness, and conflict resolution, and why I served on a team that educates others about homelessness. I see the same scars in people on the street that I once carried. Blessed daily to live a better life, I feel a debt to give back. I ask you, treat the homeless as if they were your own family. Show them dignity, respect, and compassion. For reasons you cannot predict, one day, you could be walking in their shoes. No one is immune. Act now because our community's strength is measured by how we treat those with nowhere to go.
Thank you. Reverend?
Reverend Thornton?
Mr. Fleming's going beside a 114th Street, in South Carolina. Jesus said foxes have holes, but the son of man have no place to lay his head. Jesus was homeless. Greenville, we are better than this. How can we call ourselves Christians and think of such an aggressive act? Will Jesus arrest those? Will Jesus throw them in jail? I say we all know the answer. Jesus gave to the poor. Jesus fed the poor. Jesus healed the poor. Jesus helped the poor. How are we supposed to be as a city when we do such evil? The best of us has to help the rest of us. If a person is standing, what crime are they committing? If a person is sitting, what crime are they committing? But if a person is sleeping, now they're committing a crime. What crime are they committing? Instead of facing the problem with bravery and courage, we choose to hide. Why? We can't help those because our hearts are so wicked. Martin Luther King gave his life fighting for the poor. He gave his life fighting for injustice. Affordable housing is the problem that's causing the homes. Greenville, we can do better. The Bible says, "If you have respect to him that wear the rich clothing, and say unto him, sit down here in a good place, and say to the poor, stand out there or sit there under my footstool, are you not then partial in yourselves and become judges of evil thoughts?" God said, "Hark, my beloved brother, have not God chosen the poor of this world, rich in faith and heirs of the kingdom, which he hath promised to them that love him?" But check this out, key verse, "But ye have despised the poor. Do not rich men oppress you and draw you before the judgment seat." That's what that bill do. Who's complaining about them being there? Is it the poor people or the rich? It's right here in the Bible. Right here. What's it? What's it? Let's see what it says. "But ye have despised the poor. Do not the rich men oppress you and draw you before the judgment seat." The court of law. Why don't they help the poor? Do like Jesus. No, it makes us look bad. So you run for the problem. So you want to give it to law enforcement, throw them in jail. Really? You want to call yourself Christians? Now we see why Jesus was the one that was perfect. That's all I have to say. We're going to throw them from the judgment seat because it looks bad. But what crime are they committing? Nothing, just they're being poor. Thank you, I hope.
Mr. Bruce Wilson, what you doing signing up to speak to city council again? All the way from Piedmont or someplace.
I'm here though.
Yeah, I know. I don't mind doing that with you. I do that with you. Yeah. Yeah, we got, you got three minutes.
You took some of my minutes, anyway. Counsel, thank you for having me. Ms. Fleming, how you doing? For the last couple of years, Mayor, I have been able to engage with low enforcement throughout this state. In the past, I used to just simply go on television to talk about low enforcement, but for the last two years, I've been able to engage and talk and speak with different law enforcement agencies and correct problems and interact, and we have good conversations. I have not been able to do that with the Greenville City Police Department, unfortunately. And within the last couple of weeks, we have seen several different incidents that have happened in Greenville, in downtown, to be exact. We've seen a host of videos of people fighting, looked like brawls, and even one time, I was at the Greenville Mall and had just left, and my phone started going off because there was a situation at the mall with a fight. And fortunately, we know that just a couple of days ago, last week, a young man was shot and killed at the Greenville Mall. And so I've been thinking of my Greenville City Police Department. It doesn't seem that this is on their radar. It doesn't seem that this is on their radar. But what is on their radar if an individual is in downtown Greenville with marijuana? Some call it blunt. Marijuana cigarette. That individual, he'll be arrested. These other fights, these other shootings, that's not important. Come down here with some marijuana, and we'll take care of you. Mr. Mayor, there was a young man that was arrested for killing four college students while they were asleep. And I have a photo of his arrest. Also, Mr. Mayor, I have a photo of a young man that was in downtown Greenville that was arrested for allegedly having a marijuana cigarette. And I would just love for you to and this counsel to view the image of those two arrests, if I may. This is a young man that was arrested in downtown Greenville for having allegedly a marijuana cigarette. Mr. Mayor, I think we can see the difference in his arrest for a marijuana cigarette and a young man that was arrested for murdering four college students. It's sad that I have to stand here and ask this counsel that it would be nice if our city police could arrest people that have marijuana the same way that this man who killed four innocent students was arrested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Martin? Mr. John Martin?
Hello, everybody. My name is John Martin. And because of a loving God and a loving wife, I stand before you after experiencing 18 years of my life in homelessness. Seven years ago, my wife and I started a ministry called Sunday Dinner with a Twist. And we go out, we feed the homeless every Sunday. We approximately feed 200 to 250 every Sunday. Since we started seven years ago, we've fed over 82,000 meals. And most of these meals have been done by my wife. And I'm coming to you today as asking you just to walk a mile in their shoes. And the reason I say that is because of a story. Just recently, we had a young lady who, for the last three years, we've tried to get in treatment. And we've tried over and over, and right when she got to the door, she would stop, and she wouldn't go because she found it quicker to use a $5 shot in her arm to take away all that pain. She wanted to take all that pain away that she experienced because she was sold to the sex trafficking game at two years old. And she was being homeless ever since then. She's never been in a loving family. So along with Sunday Dinner and my wife, we have never gave up on her. And I'm asking y'all not to give up on the homeless here in Greenville. The, uh, the story that I want to tell you is how she called me last week, and she was sentenced to Morris Village. And she's in Morris Village right now. And she gave me a list of stuff, the color of clothes she wanted and everything to bring down to her, which I did this morning. But the call I got Monday night where she asked me, "Could you help me learn how to build a relationship with a God that I don't understand and I don't think I love?" So I told her my experience about how I build a relationship with God. So we've talked every night. She's asked me questions. She said, "If drugs and alcohol is my answer, what is the question?" And I gave her my experience. And just yesterday morning, she gave me a call. I got out of a meeting, and she gave me a call, and she was crying. And I said, "What's wrong, honey?" And she said, "Well, Mr. Redd, guess what I just did?" She said, "I just gave my life to Jesus." And if we would have gave up on her three years ago, this day would have never happened. If y'all give up on the homeless, these days would never happen. We appreciate all the support that y'all have given us over the years through Howie Thompson and Sheriff O'Bard Lewis. And we just ask you to continue to give us a chance to get these men and women off the streets. I thank you for the time, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you very much.
Redd, I want to thank you and Cassandra for your ministry. It's making a difference, brother.
Mr. Derek Quarles? Three minutes.
Good evening. For the past nine to 10 weeks in downtown Greenville, we've seen a, Greenville downtown Greenville has been under siege. Not a spike, not a trend, a wave of violence that anyone can see. By my account, based on reports, eyewitnesses, and social media, we've seen around 90 fights happen in the last nine to 10 weeks downtown. If my numbers are wrong, I challenge Greenville Police Department to prove it. They can't because we have the videos, and we've seen them with our own eyes. But here's the outrage. On any given night, I'm told that there are at least 10 police officers assigned to downtown Greenville and up to 35. Yet, when these fights break out, there's not one in sight. Meanwhile, in low-income neighborhoods, you ride through, you see eight, nine, 10 police officers stacked on a block because they can, while under policing the part of the city that has become a hotbed for weekend violence. If those same blue lights roll through Main Street, those brawls would stop. And while the chief may say this is due to a shortage of officers, the reality is, it's a shortage of leadership. And let's address the elephant in the room. The chief of police continues to stand in front of this council and the media and say that crime is down 16%. I'm no statistician, but working on a PhD, I learned how to detect when data is manipulated. This math ain't mathin'. And what matters most, the chief is missing. The triple shooting on the shops at Greenwood and Woodford Road, no police chief. The double shooting at Olive Garden and Lawrence Road, no police chief. Weekends of violence downtown, no police chief. If we had a black police chief, I guarantee you, from every pocket of this city, they'd be calling for his resignation because he's not, he's not present. But because Howie is a friend of the city, he could get away with murder. If you can show up when the city is, if you can't show up when the city is bleeding, you're not leading. Chief Howie Thompson has failed this city. He has failed to tell the truth, and he's failed to lead from the front when it matters most. Greenville doesn't need a police chief who hides behind numbers. We need a chief who stands on the front line. Chief Thompson must resign, and he must do it effective immediately. Thank you.
Reverend Kazel?
Thank you, counsel. I'm Justin Kazel at 207 Frank Street. Appreciate the time. The first sentence that was in the letter that Mr. Dworkin sent out says that the homeless issue is important and complex, and I feel that that's an understatement, but it's also very direct, the way to put that. So I live downtown, I work downtown, and I see those that are experiencing homelessness every day. On my way to work, my way home, when I'm at the park, everywhere. These people are experiencing parts of life that most of us in this room would never even have the capacity to think about. I served on the Triun Mercy Center Board for six years, two of those as chair, and that opened my eyes to things that I never would have thought existed. So these organizations similar to Triun that are around our city, they serve the same clientele, they do all great work, and the city has done great work around this issue as well. The Housing Fund and other efforts that are similar, they just can't be matched, and it makes me very proud to be a part of this city. They're all admirable, and they're all very necessary. There are a few concerns that I have practically about this ordinance, and one of those is enforcement. What's going to be the enforcement strategy that the police department is going to be given? Will there be sweeps? What will happen? Are they going to be simply asked to move and go somewhere else where they have nowhere else to sleep? So how practical is it to fine and arrest this population every night? That's one thing that concerns me. The second is punishment. How practical is it to fine somebody who can't afford a meal $10, let alone $500? The practicality of a fine in a situation like this is, it's inane. It's, it's not fair. And if they can't pay the fine, will there be a warrant for their arrest that comes out down the line? And what's that going to do for somebody trying to find a job, find a place to live or apply for other social services? The third concern I have about this is the human piece. Sleep isn't an option for us. We have to sleep. It's not something the body can do without. The ordinance is going to criminalize something that is a biological need. Someone who has nowhere else to sleep is being told that you can't sleep here, it's cruel and it's demeaning. The bottom line is that nobody wants anyone to sleep in the park or on their porch or on the street. Nobody wants to sleep on a porch or in a park or on the street. Towards the end of Mr. Dorkin's letter, it says this, "What authority, if any, should the city have to say, 'Friend, you cannot make your bed here.'" I don't think a friend would think about that comment or say that comment at all. I appreciate you hearing the issue. Thanks so much.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Reverend, I want to, I want to thank, I want to thank you for coming up and speaking. I think you bring up the very issues that we're trying to work around. I think all those issues that you just brought up are exactly why, if, if this council decides to do anything, if, all those issues are all the issues that we're trying to really dig down. And I just, I thought that was very productive, so thank you very much. And Mr. Covington? You're from Simpsonville, but you didn't tell what the topic was. This is Greenville, you know?
Yes, it is.
That's Simpsonville.
Darryl Covington, D Covington, LLC. We are a disaster recovery with new company, also Streets and Highways. I've had the opportunity to hear a lot of people. And after being 30 years Navy and Department of Defense, been deployed for the last 16 years. So I've been over 50 countries in Europe. And I had a chance to say what you've experienced as a human, homelessness, and a lot of that. So on that ship, I had a chance to think, man, how can I give back? How can I help? And what I don't see in Greenville is what I was growing up with, summer jobs, teenagers, because those kids, parents are struggling to pay bills and things like that. But if you give a teenager a summer job, it can help. Greenville needs it. Well, I've experienced growing up as well, food trucks. But also as a food service officer in the United States Navy and Department of Defense, we deal with MREs. It's a food source that helps out, doesn't perish. But I've heard so many people talk about putting people into homes, but they haven't talked about how to keep them in homes. And that's a big problem. How do you do that? Summer jobs, helping adults with low-income jobs, and that's what I'm here for, to get my company started, support, and to give people opportunities. So I just want to tell you, thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah. When'd you come back? When'd you come to Greenville?
I've been here since '06, but I've been deployed since '06. So I just retired last November, and I've just been dealing with NATO and all them over there. So been busy wars, been in the middle of the war, sleeping in tent camps, MREs. It's a survival. People don't talk about that. You give a person an MRE, you don't have to worry about their food source.
Yeah.
And that's a big thing.
Well, Greenville together focuses on putting people in homes, but it doesn't stop, but it doesn't stop there. We totally get, once you have one, there's a lot of issues to keep somebody in a home. So, but if you'd like to participate in that program, it's open for everybody, so I'm sure you could get up with Cody and use your help on that. Councilman Dow, you had a personal privilege.
Oh, yeah, please. Thank you. One personal privilege. I want to introduce tonight a young person who's been shadowing me last week and this week. I'm going to ask her to stand. She's sitting right between our press members. Catherine Lynn. Catherine is just started school today, sophomore at St. Joe's. She also serves on our youth commission, and she's had the great privilege of shadowing me through gripping pieces of government, such as last week's Marathon Planning Commission meeting. She'll be with me this week at the BZA meeting. She was at the West End Neighborhood Association meeting last, last week, and she joined us here for the work session and for the formal session tonight. So Catherine reached out to me last spring. I understand from our leadership, she's been a wonderful member of our youth commission. She's very impressive, very interested, and I thought tonight was a great time for her to be here and observe. So thank you, Catherine. I've enjoyed our time together, and it's not over yet.
Yeah. Just try really hard to get Dorothy to get out of the house and do something, you know? We're trying to get her motivated, whatever you do. Thank you. We're glad to have you with us at the city in that respect. Okay, counsel, you had the consent agenda? Have a motion, please.
Move second.
Okay. Clerk, recall the roll.
Councilman Dworkin?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Regular agenda, 15A, first reading?
An ordinance to authorize the city manager to extend the term of the agreement with the United States Federal Aviation Administration for the lease of a 0.39 acre of land for the Outer Marker in connection with the Greenville Downtown Airport.
So move second.
Motion and a second. Ready for a vote? Okay, clerk, recall the roll.
Councilmember Dworkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington? Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. And Mayor Douglas has already come forward. Appreciate that. 15B?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville and incorporate text updates into the Greenville Development Code recommended during the 24-month code review process.
I moved.
Motion second, if you want to make a little presentation on this.
Okay. Mayor and counsel, good evening. We have a few slides prepared, if that's okay with you all. We'll go through them briefly. But first, I'd like to thank the planning staff, if they could stand. They're here. They didn't know I was going to do this, but our project manager was Ross Zalinski, Michael Frickson, Austin Rutherford, Barrett Armstrong. We all played a part. Am I missing anybody? Nope. Okay. Thank you. This was a big project, so thank you all so much for all you did. All right. So this is our fourth update. As you know, we promised the community we would come back and update our zoning code to provide a code that works for Greenville. So if you look at our dimensional standards and the amendments, it's about 80 pages, so don't worry, I'm not going to go through all 80 pages. But we wanted to point out a few things about the dimensional standards. If you look at our maximum height, we are actually going through, going with a different approach as far as building height, rather than regulating in stories and feet, we're just regulating in stories with a defining range for each story. So with the maximum width, we are looking at increasing the building width maximum in two districts, RNB and RNXB to 60 feet. It's currently 40 feet, trying to allow buildings to be a little bit wider. And again, this is in response to feedback from the community. We also are still allowing for the density bonus allowance in those districts, and we will be increasing the width there. I meant to say on the earlier one with the height, so if, for example, on the second bullet point, we're still maintaining existing height and story maximums. So for example, if you have an MX2 district, it still can go up to four stories. So we're keeping the, the height, the number of stories the same. Okay. As far as our building break, this is just having to do with the massing of buildings, and this amendment would allow for multiple smaller notching of buildings, as you can see there in that illustration. So you don't have a long blank wall. It's more kind of push and pull, and it works better across multiple building types and sizes. All right. If we look at the next slide with our land uses, the food and beverage uses, we are going to recommend that there not be a special exception option for after midnight food and beverage uses in those residential commercial districts, the RNX and the RC districts. Staff felt like there really wasn't a scenario where it would be appropriate next Staff felt like there really wasn't a scenario where it would be appropriate next to residential. We also are going to come up with late-night uses in this proposal. These are all alcohol-based businesses, so if you look at brew pubs, microbreweries, small wineries, and micro distilleries, we will be adding use standards for those categories to match what we have with bars and nightclubs, so there aren't any gaps.
I hope we, this is awfully a timely issue, but I hope we could look at something else as we look at areas where there's a number of late-night places. This is something, an idea that somebody brought to me some time back, that not only would you maybe have a security person on your premises, but the issue is when you have a collection of them, we really need more in the zone, if you will. And I wonder if, this question was me, has anybody ever done something where you have to, if you have a business in that particular zone, there's more than two places, maybe it's three, that they have to collectively support additional security in that block? Perhaps that'd be a fee they have to all pay. But there's just something, I think that's correct, it's not when there's one particular business, but when you have two or three, then you got a whole different issue. And you have not, it may not happen at the particular business, but it may happen a block away from that business or in that vicinity. So I think that's something worth while to look at.
All right, noted. Thank you.
I think that's a recognition on the reality on the ground, that when you have several of these businesses, you may have an issue not at the door of that business or inside, but actually just outside.
Okay, we'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Would that be something that would be altered after we vote?
Well, I'm just going to throw it out there, something to look at. As we're kind of looking at these issues, I think it'd be a creative way to doing it, than just one by one.
Great idea.
Okay, thank you. And with late-night uses, this is actually the most common special exception that staff is seeing come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so we're recommending putting some protections in place against any adverse conditions from late night, and again, it's across the board, whatever the business is, as long as they're operating late night. So creating these new standards, prohibiting exterior sound amplification since we have residents downtown and other areas, requiring that they close any outdoor and rooftop dining, and the BZA could modify that. Establishments serving alcohol must retain at least one security person. We felt like that was a good kind of compromise. And then we sort of backed off of the provision where we would require business to be open six months, and then they could apply for the late-night permit. Instead, we have asked them, we're going to ask them to have a check-in meeting with city staff. The BZA may require that, and then security personnel can be waived.
Question on that one. So if, if you have a business that applies for an alcohol license, and you say after six months that they no longer have to have a security person, but after that, they begin to have problems, what's the process for us reestablishing that requirement?
Councilmember Gibson, then they would be asked to come back to our technical advisory committee and revisit that issue with the staff, and then we may make adjustments from there.
Okay, so that decision by BZA that they no longer have to have that security thing is not irrevocable? I'm just saying, from a legal standpoint, because we as staff, we can't.
I want to ask the expert.
Our staff can't overrule BZA.
So just like Mary Douglas was saying, they would come back to our board, we'd have a discussion with our police department, figure out kind of a path forward, but that, just because we are waiving that requirement after that period of time, it's still there. We can re-impose that, you know, after we have that meeting. So if we find that we're having issues, obviously we can put that security requirement back on, and then we'll just continue to monitor probably in six-month blocks.
Okay.
And just see how they're doing.
And can that's something that the BZA would make a decision in their decision to cede that to staff? So they would give staff the authority to make that call. And then if they were a continued problem, their special exception, there's a process for revoking the special exception.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Your tea.
If you look at our Main Street storefront in the MXSD, which is that shop front downtown district, our amendment proposes that fronting Main Street in Augusta, that it would have to be in active use, we're going for that 18-hour downtown. And so new general medical and general office uses would not be able to be located physically on Main Street within 15 feet of the building facade. We brought this back from 30 feet, we narrowed it down to 15 feet, and then we looked at the boundary, which would be from the Hyatt down to the baseball stadium, where you have the MXSD shop front space. So our intent and our idea is that these spaces would be filled with restaurants, retailers, entertainment venues, et cetera, to activate Main Street.
Does that Augusta Road just include the Augusta Road in the West End? What about?
It would be from the intersection at South Main and Augusta on down to Vardre Street, where you have the MXS shop front district.
So it excludes the rest of it?
Yeah. Right. And we will still allow office and medical uses. We're not saying we don't want those uses downtown, they're just more appropriate in the upper stories, or in the internal building lined with an active retailer, or on the side streets. And then any existing office or medical could continue as long as they abide by the nonconformity section. And then there is a provision that allows the zoning administrator to waive the requirement if we have a situation like a historic building that's already set up for office, like the Old Chamber Building. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, we want to see more of these, and we want to make them more straightforward for the public. We have aligned our setbacks with the district standards, and so we removed that ADU cannot be any closer to the side property line than the primary house. And then the rules are the same if you have an attached ADU or a detached. We also are increasing the height maximum from one and a half to two stories, but they would still have to be a maximum of 20 feet tall. So the total is not changing. But this is so we can get the more traditional ADU, the room over the garage. We have also expanded our reporting period to 2028. That was originally set to expire this year, but again, we want this to work because we'd like to see more. And we are maintaining the owner occupancy requirement, so either the property owner has to live in the main house or in the accessory dwelling unit. We've had 22 of these for the first two years, and again, we'd like to see more and would like to see less workarounds. Many people are coming in as accessory structures and then retrofitting them with an oven after they've been permitted with the more favorable accessory structure standards. All right, and then finally, we have the sidewalk fee-in lieu, and this will be administered by engineering in conjunction with planning. But currently, as y'all know, when you have new construction, we have a street sidewalk requirement. And so new construction has to either build the sidewalk, or if there's an existing one, they have to rebuild it. And the current situation is they're required to put it in, or they can obtain a waiver from the engineering director. But it's meeting a variance requirement that they have. So this option is limited to those situations where you might have steep slopes or stormwater issues, future road work, and there might be utility conflicts. And the idea would be that we would provide this fee-in lieu so that then we can fund sidewalk construction in another part of the city where there's an active project or where there's a need. And the fees are in the engineering design and specifications manual.
Are the fees proportionate to the cost to do the sidewalk?
Yes. Yes.
This has been a very successful program citywide. When you look back with the last decade, it's made a huge difference in walkability in neighborhoods in the city. So I think this has come up before, it's a good, I think it's a good approach.
Quick question about that, is the engineering administrator the individual who oversees where the fee-in lieu of would be distributed?
Yes, that's correct. We, planning will consult with engineering, with Clint Link and Paul Dow and their staff on that. Okay, finally, we did have a long planning commission meeting. Thank everybody for sticking with us on that, but at the end, the planning commission approved, recommended approval, six to zero, and they are recommend, the recommendation was the approval with the following modifications. That would be the Section 19-4.11.6. A, it's related to our outdoor advertising section, the type-one signs. And this really provides clarity for outdoor advertising signs. So we're scaling it back a little bit. Currently, there are four districts where these are allowed, and we're removing the BG and IX, Business General and Industrial Flex, from the list of permitted districts. The land management ordinance just had two. And also striking through the allowance of LED lighting, so the only type would, allowed would be static signage, and any existing that's already in place can remain as is. But any changes in the future from static to electric would not be permitted under this proposal. And these are two changes that staff thinks are in the city's best interest, and as we look at aesthetics in our city. So with that, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Dworkin. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, 15C.
An ordinance to rescind ordinance number 23-74 and the previous development agreement with NR Gateway Greenville LLC, and enter into a new development agreement between the city and NR Gateway Greenville LLC for the design and construction of public improvements to the property located at 250 North Church Street, and to appropriate up to $7,256,000 for the project.
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion on this? Okay, clerk, call the, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, any staff reports, Mr. Manager? Okay, thank you.
First off, for those who didn't hear, for those who didn't attend our work session, we had some great presentations today through, from various staff teams, and I would encourage the public to go back and listen to those. I thought that they were really well-done. So many thanks to Autumn for her presentation on our opioid team, and Paul's presentation for stormwater, Bill, his presentation for parking, and Monique on her presentation from some of our new CD initiatives that are about to launch. So all very exciting. And I'd like to just reiterate that the work that the planning staff did tonight on the 24-month code update, when we passed the ordinance in June of '23, we promised the community that we would come back the first six months, the first year, and then yearly thereafter, to make changes to the code, to be responsive to what our community wanted to see. We've actually exceeded that. We've done four updates. We've done one every six months since the code was adopted. And tonight, that was a lot of work that the staff has spent months working on and preparing, including the work that they did specifically with late-night uses and ADUs, but also the fee-in lieu of sidewalk program. I mean, I think that we've seen that that can be very successful, and just wanted to make sure that I didn't lose an opportunity to not only recognize them for their hard work, but also to make sure that we remind ourselves that we made this promise to the community, and we're living that promise. So I'm very proud of the work that our staff teams did to deliver that update to you tonight. Speaking of planning projects, our upcoming project preview meeting on August 26 is going to be an important one. Planning staff has notified me that we will have at least eight or more projects presenting that evening, including the latest for the former Baby Balo site and plans for the city's new civic design center. The full listing of projects will be posted to the city's website next Tuesday, not tomorrow, a week from Tuesday. In addition, there will be two public input opportunities at the PPM. First, the consultant team working to update our downtown design guidelines will have a series of input stations for that project. So if you are a designer, architect, broker, downtown business owner, or general citizen, come and learn more about our design guidelines, which affect how we grow and develop, and how that happens downtown and throughout the design review boundary. Second, our planning staff will have the next input workshop for our Greenville 2045-year update. We had a great turnout for this workshop back in May, which focused on open space and resiliency. The PPM on August 26 will focus on transportation and mobility, and we know that we have a lot of interest in mobility in our community based on the number of people that attended our last two public meetings on the Wheel Park and Thunk Track, and also the Orange Line. So very excited as we talk more about transportation and mobility. So if you want to learn more about the city's efforts, I strongly encourage you to come out for this event. These activities are planned for the August 26 project preview meeting, as a reminder, which will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Prisma Health Welcome Center at Unity Park. We also celebrated our NRPA Park and Recreation Tourism Month. So you're going to get, see some fun pictures from our PRT staff. July was National Park and Recreation Month for our very own Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department, which they celebrated with the community all month long. Community-driven programs and events included a pop-up mini golf tournament at McPherson Park, educational classes at Unity Park, Euphoria in Season at the TD Saturday Market, a special pop-up event celebrating 20 years of Euphoria in Greenville, and a youth lacrosse clinic at Holmes Park. In addition, department initiatives were featured on social media all month long, ending with a social media giveaway. Most importantly, the month focused on NRPA's motto for the 40th anniversary of National Park and Recreation Month, Build Together, Play Together. All month long, PRT staff was encouraged to take a moment to be outside, be active, and be together through staff walks, pickleball, and basketball games, and a staff bike parade. And as a thank you to staff, department leadership delivered popsicles in the field to help beat the heat. And finally, PRT celebrated the end of National Parks and Recreation Month with a department cookout, which I got to attend. It's been a summer spent building up Greenville together and playing together, and they're a wonderful department, and we wanted to take an opportunity to recognize them during our, my staff reports tonight. And finally, I just want to give a special thank you to Green Link and our Public Works employees, who helped Greenville Water provide transportation for their team to be able to have their field of, or their team picnic on Friday night. And they were able to do that because our team worked so that they wouldn't have to, so that they could all go and enjoy an evening of fellowship together. So many thanks to our Green Link and our Public Works teams for stepping up and being collaborative with some of our other community partners. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had to report tonight.
I just want to tell you, from the Greenville Water side, the committee, they were thrilled to death that the GTA and the city had helped them do that. That meant there were 50 or 60 water employees who could park at the water system and not find parking down at the baseball stadium, but they really appreciated.
I really appreciate them stepping up to do that, so that they could enjoy their time with their colleagues.
They really, it was duly noted and appreciated, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, meeting.
6:42.